Right, so on to agenda item number one, apologies and reasons for absence. Have we had an apology from?
We've had an apology from Anna.
Yes.
Chris Clark isn't here. He's been in the studio, but he's given his apologies as far as I know. But Anna has.
Anna has.
Anna, Deputy Counselor.
Yes. So let's see if Counselor Clark attends this evening. Do we have a proposer to accept the apologies and reasons for absence tonight? How is that? Do I have a second up? Thanks very much, Counselor Harris. All those in favour of acceptance? Thank you very much, abstentions. One. Flattening, Counselor Brooks?
No, fine, thank you.
Item number two, declarations of members' interests and applications for any dispensations. Any members tonight interested in any of the goings on? Seems not. Item number three, deputations from our gallery of members of the public. Does anyone have anything they would like to say this evening? Well, thank you very much for your attendance, nonetheless. Item number four, it's a good film of the accuracy of the minutes of our meeting. The twenty second of October, and also to ratify the meeting minutes from the eighth of October also. Does anyone have?
Can you do this separately, because I wasn't here for one of them?
Very good.
Just before we go further, I've just had apologies from Counselor Clark. So we can accept that too, please. I know it's slightly out of all the chair, but I just got it on the phone from his phone and said he was sorry he couldn't make it.
Sure thing, let's revisit that. And all those in favour of accepting Counselor Clark's absence today? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll do these on to separate ones. Let's start with then the minutes of the most recent meeting, the twenty second of October twenty twenty five. Counselor Brooks has observations.
I was starting with the extraordinary, I can't comment on that because I wasn't here.
So we're on the.
But I would have liked to make one comment on it in general because.
In general? Does it relate to the accuracy?
Are you asking us to stand now?
Please.
Yes, that's a good thing. Yeah, well, the minutes, I know we're starting to improve, but I, this time, to be honest, I couldn't be bothered to because of the frictions that are caused by pointing out errors. And there are names spelt wrong. And it frustrates me because this is the legal document of the council. And I know I keep repeating myself, but when are we going to get to a situation where we actually get minutes that don't have mistakes in?
Do you have any comment on the actual content of the minutes?
Well, I did, so spelling of names and other issues, but it's too long for me to go through again.
Counselor Brooks did give me a comment which I corrected. They've all been corrected, the errors that Counselor Brooks sent to you many months ago.
But these are all in the public domain, it doesn't look very good.
This is draft, and when they're drafted, they're in the public domain as such. Once they're corrected, they will go to the public domain as accepted. If you could sign the bottom sheet, please.
Well, soon as we ratify those, we're certainly sharp. Any further commentary on the meeting minutes from the extraordinary meeting of twenty second of October? Counselor Enzley?
Just a quick clarification, that was the ten fifteen fourteen exterminating, is that being quoted?
Yes. Do I have a proposer for acceptance of the meeting minutes on the twenty second? Counselor Enzley proposes, second to Counselor Brooks?
Now, can I just raise one point on that? Which I think is quite important because it actually says on the minutes here that I was in attendance. And then it says I apologize for not being in.
That's incorrect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other observation before we?
Sorry, I didn't say.
No, no, before we move to vote?
I can't, I can't vote on that one.
So which one are we voting on? The twenty second, Counselor Enzley. So Counselor Enzley is proposing that we accept those, do I have a second there? Thank you, Counselor Harris, all those in favour of acceptance of the meeting minutes of the twenty second of October, the extraordinary meeting? Which one were you going for? Twenty second of October, that's recent. The extraordinary meeting. Okay. I'm sorry, I've done that at the board.
No, that doesn't matter.
Sorry, can we have that vote again, please? Okay. Yes.
Oh, no.
Abstaining?
Abstaining, because I wasn't here.
Presumably Counselor Brooks abstains. Recorded otherwise, no, happy?
I think as long as it's corrected, that it works here, it's fine.
Yes, I did, great. Okay, moving on to some. Okay, on to the accuracy of meeting minutes of the eighth of October twenty twenty five. Comment for those? No? Do I have a proposer to accept the meeting minutes of eighth? Thank you very much, Counselor Wadsworth, a second there. Thank you, Counselor Brooks, all those in favour of acceptance of that meeting minutes, that is unanimous. Of course, thank you all. So about the overall there? That's your signature. Very well, on to then item number five, councillors' reports and questions. Do we have anything from the floor? Counselor Wadsworth?
Hi, just a quick update. I'd like to pass on our thanks to Emma from Tesco's who's donated ten boxes of chocolates and ten packs of mince pies for the turning on of the Christmas tree. So we'll have those to be given away to the public. I have circulated today the pictures that we've been sent in by the children for the chance to turn on the Christmas tree. I will, or we will, be contacting the winner later once we've got all of your nominations in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wadsworth. And if we can, please, Clark, can you send a letter of thanks for the generous offer to Tesco's and staff, please? Yeah, thank you very much. Counselor Brooks?
Yes, I would just like to thank the chairman for coming along to the first officially recognised, what do you call it, remembrance Sunday, observance of the two minutes silence on Sunday. I know that the residents have been asking for it for some time, appreciated it and appreciated yours and our, should not hear our deputy chairman's attendance. And I appreciated it as well, as you know, I stood there in my capacity as open self, one of the open self ward councillors. And it was a very mean, is it poignant, meaningful, poignant thing? And I, although I was absent at the meeting where you very kindly approved it, and I noted the minutes say that you would like to take it on. I wasn't that keen for the Open Town Council to take it on at the very beginning. But now there's been significant changes to the county service where there was no outside afternoon as such silence. Or last post, I think that maybe next year we could be looking at, maybe having a little bit of a musical accompaniment recording or something. And I will shut up and sit down so that we, the residents know that there is a two minute silence at the eleven o'clock.
That was, that's very kind of you, Counselor Brooks. Yes, it was a, it was a poignant and yeah, thought provoking service. Any further questions or are we going to actually ask some questions, I mean?
We've got a councillor's question, but I think with all that's been going on behind the scenes, but I don't think it needs to be read out now, it can be withdrawn.
Well, we had a question from you which has been responded to, I think, so.
Yeah, but.
That's a state of solitude.
But if I can also mention that I still haven't had a response to what I perceive were more important questions from the previous meeting where I was told that I would be told about that in private because of the exempt nature of some of the answers might become.
I will arrange that up.
Yeah, but this one is being answered in a letter by Paul yourselves and that, and I don't know. I think everyone has it, so we don't really need to go through it.
So you're happy to withdraw, aren't you?
Yeah, and just thank you.
Any further questions that have been declared otherwise? Thank you. Item number six then, term four. Honestly, thank you. Sometimes it doesn't feel that way. So yes, we were, we were glad to the council, we're overjoyed to, to attend a helpful Conduct Committee meeting with RCC. So thank you very much to the members that joined us that were part of that. They made some very useful observations about the way that we do things at OTC, which we're looking to implement forthwith. So thank you again for the nature of your support, RCC. And of course, the remembrance services over the weekend and also yesterday. Again, very poignant, and it was lovely to see such a great turnout at all of the remembrance events. It was a very, very well responded to set of services this year. So, you know, it was quite lovely and I encourage anyone next year to come along also. On to your report, report, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Obviously, you've got the newsletter, which is in fact as always. I'm sorry, I've got a list of ten items here, so I'll try as brief as possible to tell you what's been going on. First thing is bringing Counselor Enzley, met with Open Town Tennis Club to talk about the future of the club because obviously we've got a building survey that is less than complimentary by the present structure and its maintenance. And so we're slow, I think this will be an ongoing dialogue. We've got a new chairman, he's very open to talk and see your way forward for this. And discuss potential ways forward for the club and to renovate or whatever for this, the tennis club. Then we had a meeting about the Open Town Centre Action Plan and how we're progressing with RCC. So we met with RCC on the sixth of November. We had an interesting discussion with RCC. It seems as though the government are pressing ahead very quickly now with the second tranche of unification, if you want to call it that, as we've called many things, many conjurational things, whereby it seems as though this will be the last time RCC will be setting a budget as such. So this is the last time they will be able to actually set a meaningful budget. After that, the shadow authority will come in and will put some kind of restrictions on what's left of Rutland County Council, whether it be Lincolnshire or Leicestershire. Both are vying for that crime. And a difficult situation for RCC at the moment, to be honest. We obviously need the flag flying, we did remember this day, as Counselor Brooks knows, and we've put the half, the half flag at half mask for this week in the name of Counselor George Lucas's unfortunate passing. I also have got now, just give you a few updates, string from my invoice, I've had the first forum. Those are new councillors, we have an unmeted electricity bill for the street lighting, which is not common ways in Elkhorn. And there was an agreement, goes back and past the time, where we pay that electricity bill. And the councillors are from the county council, mill, but it's an agreement. It's about twenty five K, so it's within the budget for this year. It changes, there was a horrendous one where it was thirty eight K at one time, yeah. Remember that, when the electricity bill went through the roof? It went through the roof here too. So it's back to normalish times. The other thing we've had is a survey of the trees, there's now anybody who wants the survey, it's about fifty pages long. So a stupid clue from RCC has now come through. My first, I've got a first estimate, there are twenty four character, character, category two, which is legally required, we have to do. So there's twenty four of those, the category three is fifteen, most of those are in cuts close. By law, I was twenty two by the, I seem to remember of cuts close. We've had an estimate already from one contractor, I'm trying to get, I'm getting another quote. It will be something around ten to fifteen K to do the work. So we'll get quotes for that and I will bring them back hopefully to the December meeting because everybody, I'm sure, new councillors are probably aware too, we have to get this sorted out by March at the latest because the birds will be back and we need to do it before that. So it's a bit of a rushed agenda on that, so I will try and bring that back as quickly as I can. Now, the rain also for a play area inspection, it'll either be with Seagrave or Compat, but these are small. It's about three hundred pounds, so it's not a big thing. But that will hopefully be done before Christmas now. The other thing I need to make you aware of is that Open School have also put in a significant complaint to RCC about the lack of markings within Elkhorn. In other words, pedestrian crossings where you can hardly see them now because the white paint has been eroded. And they are saying that they've had a significant increase of near misses over the last few periods. So they're getting increasingly concerned because of the markings being so poor in Elkhorn, and I can attest to that, that they have real concerns and I, that's the situation. Right, there's one other thing I need to talk to, I'm sorry about this chair, LRAC training. We've now got a situation, and I think the chair agrees, we need to have an evening meeting with LRAC on code of conduct training fairly urgently now. I've got dates for you and I'd like you to tell me which ones you've considered. The third of December is the one I'd like, that's six thirty to eight thirty. And it will be with, I nearly called him the dick cheese, I don't want, I repeat it, oh, it's on tape, John Kukai. And so it's the chief exec of effectively of LRAC will come here and give a session for two hours on code of conduct, which I think all councillors here know is becoming an issue and we need all councillors to be trained up to acceptable behaviour, especially in public. So that will, if you could tell me that sort of the first, second or third of December he will come. It will cost us two hundred and fifty pounds, I think that's there or there, but I think that's good.
First, second or third? Did you say first, second or third?
Yeah, first, that's a Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday of the first, I think it's, I don't look strange, I'm.
Workout available. Or no, which ones?
Oh, you see, you big, that's your other chair. And the other thing that seems to have slipped his boy is, and I wonder if the council would consider it, it's still at time, is the fact that I've noticed in the press and everything, many, Stamford certainly, Grantham now, and I think Market Harbour are offering free parking in the Christmas period. We've got on a scheme whereby we can subsidise that, it's about, I'm looking at my county council, they have about thousand fifty per day to do that. So we've still got time if we want to do that and maybe councillors can consider. So that's the end of my report for that bit.
What about your training?
Very much.
Your training?
My, oh, sorry, my training is ongoing, I've done, nearly done the Ilker, I've just got one more question block to finish. And I'm doing Filker next month and I will be starting Silker in the new year. The Silker is a new syllabus, so it's been delayed somewhat, it's different from any other Silker before it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Nichols was the very start of that.
Yeah, just a quick question on about the RCC monitoring officer meeting, obviously I wasn't there.
Yes.
So I was just wondering if there was going to be a report or a brief. Or if that's appropriate, just for information for those of us who weren't there.
I'm sure we can pull together a brief crazy and some action points for the council and, and circulate that. Yeah, certainly, if you wouldn't mind making a note of that.
Yes, no, absolutely, we're recording any of that.
Yeah, 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 so just as long as it's.
I'll go through it all.
Then Counselor Wadsworth?
Just a quick. Usually RCC fund the December free parking. So we need to see what they've got planned for this year before we start committing to anything.
I'm sure you can put our collective heads together into the two authorities and work something out.
Yeah.
Could you maybe bring in Mount Council or anyone, see what you feel all sorts of states up to you?
Oh, that's rather putting people on the spot, I think.
I know what you mean. If, I would say custom and practice. You know, if it's been, whichever way it's been done in the past, it's reasonable to assume it could be done again in the present. I'm not sure about the future.
It's a dangerous present answer plan.
It's more like answering it without answering it.
But we can certainly explore that and work out between the two authorities a sensible way forward. Thank you.
Counselor Brooks, I'm slightly in the same position as Counselor Nichols over the monitoring officer's meeting. I won't go into public reasons why I didn't attend, but I did write after a discussion with one of our staff members, whether the monitoring officer would be happy to provide minutes on, not the details, but the significant governance points that were raised that would affect me and our staff. And I got a response back saying no. And it was up to the people attended to highlight that to the staff if felt necessary. And obviously, people like me, we weren't here, so maybe we could have a, a meeting with the chairman and the clerk, maybe at the same time we're doing the question answering that was outstanding. So that if there was anything that you felt, chairman, that was relevant to me or any councillors that I missed out of, that you could just highlight, because it's not going to come from monitoring officer.
Yeah, that's, I think that's quite a reasonable request, Counselor Brooks. And I think that, you know, for the benefit of Counselor Nichols, the staff and yourself, we can certainly cover some of the key aspects and, and action points arising from that meeting.
Yeah, because that's why it was important for the clerk to know the governance things, not everything that was raised in the meeting. Because he is responsible to ensure we are following governance.
Overall, I suppose the theme I would characterise as being generally very supportive. And we've certainly got some, some things that we can work on. Yes, but RCC have generally been very, very supportive of the situation, offered some, yes, good ideas. Go ahead, Clark.
Just sorry, being there was ten, I just forgot one, but it's an important one for Counselor Brooks in particular. We wrote, as you know, to Moores at our external auditor, and I asked a question and made it clear that the email they respond, they got from Counselor Brooks was not authorised by the council. And I got a response to them from Caroline Rossette, her engagement lead. Thank you for the email, to avoid any possible confusion, I will note on the file that any objection, objection correspondence from Counselor Brooks, whether it has been sent from his official email address or not, is not official correspondence of the council. Just to be clear, objections or point rate by extraordinary would never be taken to be formal council correspondence, as it's right, as it is right, a right provided to electors. Obviously, this right equally applies to sitting councillors, but as vast as electors and not councillors.
Good, because that's what I said from the beginning.
Lovely. Right, on to then, oh, sorry, Counselor Harris.
What are we going to decide on the first, second or third of December, as we're all here?
You can now, but I gave the option.
Otherwise, we email everybody out.
You could have early.
To be honest, I'm going to have to consult. That's all right.
Can we give the full email in, please?
I would prefer Wednesday.
Let's, let's.
Let's do it by email.
If that's all, if no one's got an objection to at least taking a breath so that we can consult our respective diaries and come back on the most popular. If we're split somewhere down the middle, it might be prudent to look at two. Let's see, let's see what everyone's availability is.
I'm going to settle it, like, to actually submit the responses, so at the end of next week or something.
What's week today?
Shall we do Friday this week? Yep.
Friday this week would be best, is that okay with councillors?
Not a formal resolution, but are we all happy with the theme of responding to our availability for conduct meeting? Friday in play this week, super, okay. Oh.
There's our Christmas dinner at some point, I don't know what day it will be, we decide it next week. So, yeah, I'll, I'll do what I can.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Councillors are important.
Highly, highly important pieces of. Okay, on to, oh, sorry, item number eight then, correspondence received?
Covers that, the Open School is the name of it.
Splendid.
Anybody who wants to see that, I can post it on to them.
Thank you. On to item number nine, we have, I'm going to ask you a relatively delicate question, Counselor Brooks, because I know that this is usually the bug where we, are you happy with how the payments over five thousand are displayed?
No.
I'd say, by the way, there's another sheet on your, should be on your desk in front of you, which now has two extra columns, it has the invoice number, but it also now has an index number that is unique to the Open Town Council. So when the auditor asks for that invoice, unlike the invoice number which is neither here nor there really, yet they will be able to find within five minutes, no less, a minute. And what they, where that invoice is in our system, because that index is unique. So each invoice we pay will have an index which is unique, either a credit payment or a payment. A payment, so everyone this financial year has an index, which is in realty. So work and look it up, it's indexed in there. There is now no way an auditor cannot find an invoice or a cheque that we have gone with.
Counselor Brooks, the ongoing problem I have, and it seemed to stop before, I've said this before, before Chris Evans, who came on our clock, is that there is no proper audit trail. Because this sheet of paper which lists them doesn't actually need to be kept. We always used to, and I, I know you hate me going on about the past, but it is a requirement in the audit trail that each payment over five thousand pounds should be a single agenda item so that it can be clearly minuted and it must link back to the original minute when the council approved it. So that's what I'm asking for, is just the simple thing like, and then also like what I find frustrating is that we're going to be asking whether we actually want to pay, say twenty nine thousand pounds for the bus later in the meeting, but you're asking us to approve it here. So, yes, because that's what it says, we're going to approve. Just consider and approve, so it shouldn't be there, it should come after the bus thing as an agenda item so that we, if we approve to pay the council twenty nine thousand pounds, we want to carry on with that scheme, we then come to the agenda item and we say, yes, we approve it. And that's the proper audit trail. To have it now where it's asking us to approve it now is wrong. Because if we then come to the agenda item coming up and say, actually, we don't want to fund the opera anymore, it's a little bit silly.
I'm going to just address that urgently, Jordan. Okay. Counselor Brooks, let's be clear about this, it is only agenda item. If it's not approved, then obviously, we, I agree, we shouldn't pass it. We can pass it easily in this resolution with a caveat that says if the agenda item, which is obviously fourteen, if the agenda item fourteen is passed, then this will go through. So it's easy to put a resolution together, Counselor Brooks, that says this payments will be approved subject to item fourteen being approved. If it's not approved, then clearly it won't. Could you tell me, please, Counselor Brooks, how, for instance, Rutland County Council's business rates is going to have a minute reference?
Because when we have ongoing payments, when we set our budget at the beginning of the setting of the budget, we approve reoccurring payments. Otherwise, so that's already pre-approved in the, in the budget, the annual budget. We, we'd like, we.
So every one of you.
Your salaries.
What you're saying is every one of yous could have that?
Well, no, because we don't know what the bus is going to be. It's gone up three and a half thousand pounds this year, you know, we don't know what it is. So, and that's why we need to clear, I don't want to argue, but we need to clear. But this auditor, the auditor's written in the report that we are not following procedures.
He doesn't say about this though.
It does, because I wrote to him and he said, I can't. It does, because I wrote to him and he said, I can't answer you, but I will point you to the audit of two thousand and twenty one where I raised it.
Well, I wasn't here.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I said at the beginning, you weren't here when we, these issues started, so I'm not attacking you. I'm just asking, because I, I ask this at every meeting, as Chris has raised it today, are you happy? It's been raised at every single meeting for a year. And we need to get to the situation where we can just follow the correct audit procedure. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, councillor Brooks, for that.
And it's not a, it's just a way we've fallen into bad practice.
So. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. Do you mind if I say that about that?
Please. Well, we'd be having an opportunity to talk about it.
Okay, um. Have you finished, councillor Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I just want to make two quick questions. One is that the, what we, we mined the authority to spend, this is minoting the release of funds. There's a distinct difference between the two. And actually, you did vote to approve the two appendices that now appear in our financial regulations that detail that. So I would request that you have a quick look and just make sure that you're familiar with those two appendices in the Open Town Financial, Financial Regulations. Secondly, the business about whether this needs to go into, whether the, uh, authority for release of funds is actually needs to be itemized other than in a single document is we, we have taken advice on that, and this is absolutely, uh, fine for what we're doing here. The third point, what we do here, as long as it's, as long as it can be minuteed, and it is minuteed, remember, these things are minuteed. So there is a record care. So, and the third thing I'd like to say is that the OCOM Hopper payment, ideally, in a perfect world, that OCOM Hopper release of funds should have been postponed until item fourteen. So we, first of all, gave the authority for expenditure. And then secondly, we give the authority to, uh, release the funds for the OCOM Hopper payment, OCOM Hopper. Now, I quite agree with what the clerk was saying. And then actually, it's easy enough to minute the recordings of, uh, the release of expenditure as a minuteed item that says item for the OCOM Hopper, uh, is subject to the approval of item fourteen in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, so to move on past that, because we've done that to death today. Does anyone have any queries or questions regarding any of the actual machinations of the finances council at Watworth?
Okay, nine point one, just a couple of questions on there. Um, Travis Perkins, the eighth of October, just trying to work out the months there. Um, there's an in and an out. Obviously, a mistake's been made for something. Um, but what was it actually for?
Yep, I can do that.
Yeah? Um, going further down, we've had some banners made by Pumpkin Print Limited. Um, four hundred and sixty pound. I just wondered how many banners that was. And is there a possibility that we could look into, instead of just going with Pumpkin Print every time for our banners, could we have a relook at other providers? Because I think we're spending a lot of money on banners that we shouldn't be spending. I think there are cheaper alternatives out there. So if we could look into that as well, that'd be good. Um, right at the bottom, um, forty nine pound ninety nine, key safe replacement.
Yep.
Why have we replaced the key safe?
Okay, do that. The key safe was broken. I don't know good boy. It's upside, as you know, it's up the front door.
Oh, that one, not that one?
No, that one.
Right, okay. Well, I was thinking you meant that one.
It's the up door key safe, the black one.
Right.
Button on it was, for whatever reason, whether it was the, someone else outside or using it, the button was no longer usable. So I replaced it and that cost forty eight pounds.
Yep, that's, that's fair comment. I do, I've got it in my head, it was that one there, and that's why I couldn't understand why you're replacing it. Um, and the last thing on here is, uh, on the thirtieth, it says access and lived-in services. And when I looked into the other paperwork, it says fitment testing for Jail Street. Could you expand on that and tell me exactly what testing of fitments on Jail Street is, please?
Okay, I would have to look it up to be absolutely certain. Obviously, you can see it's got a white square by it, so it hasn't been paid as such yet. That's not for this consideration in this month, but I will find out councillor Watworth before to this week. I will assure you that on each three of these, I will address them, but certainly I will find the access and lived-in services. Um, speaking off the record, and I might be wrong, it could be that this is the testing of the bolts for all the Christmas lights, which we had to do urgently. That's right.
But why has we only done it on Jail Street?
No, we did it everywhere. I think it might have said Jail Street, but it's, the trouble is in the comments legs list. You can't put Jail Street, Mill Street, High Street and all the rest of it. So I think all the bolts that are holding the Christmas lights up have been tested again this year for all health and safety grounds.
Markless. Councillor Brooks, do you have a brief?
Yeah, I've got three points, because obviously you asked me that question, and I would just like to raise some points on the thing. I'm sure we're doing it on block, aren't we, this week?
Unless there's anything especially contentious.
Yeah, um, well, I just want to bring up the thing about redacting, um.
Sorry, it just needs to add the amendment in for the whole, obviously.
Yeah, I, I need to, where we've answered, that's fine, that's answered by a call. Um, I, I have a concern about the G D P R on the redaction, because we're still using a pen. And I'm sure, Chris, if I'm wrong, you did say to us that we bought the Adobe software. Because I, I actually took, because for some reason our copies of our bank statements have the account number redacted, which is good, because if we lose them, it's fine. But I held it up after the member of the public pointed out to my table lamp and I, and I could read the number from a copy. Um, so we need to sort out that issue with, with that. Um, the other thing is about an audit thing which came up about good practice. And I'm not going to read the names out, but there's a lot of things on here where councillors have been asked to pay for things which shouldn't happen. We had ten councillor good guides, which have been, money has then been paid to a councillor. All the training which used to be paid for by the office when this was raised at an audit. So, um, it, it's good practice that money shouldn't be being paid out in that way for products for the council. I don't understand why we're going back that way. Um, what was the other thing? I said through, please, I don't want to shut up. I've actually forgotten it, but I, oh, the third thing which I keep asking, and I was told would happen, and that's to explain the reason why I don't accept the accounts, is that we are supposed to be having at least two members before this meeting should be verifying the payments and invoices by initialing them. And I was told that that would start when we had a finance committee, but again, it's not started, so. And, and people take it wrong. It's not that we don't trust the people who I kept being told, oh, well, there's three councillors who approve it and I reject invoices. It's not that we don't, I don't trust the people. It's the procedure that's required. So that when we come to this meeting, we can say, have these been checked by at least one of those two members? And they go, yes. And then we can, we don't have to talk about it, because we know to the two appointed members, because when I was on council last time, I was one of those people who was appointed to do it. They go, oh, shut up, chairman.
Right, councillor, please, chair. You may answer that.
So what's your first point, councillor Brooks? I'll go through them quickly again. The redaction.
The redaction, yeah.
The redaction. Lloyds and all banks, would you believe, when they do a PDF, they password protect it. Getting the passwords out of it to get into a PDF is like opening Fort Knox. So I can understand the reasoning behind that. The reasoning is, if anybody could get into their PDFs, they'd lose, then they could alter them and do all kinds of horrible things. I tried to get the password from our bank. I'm struggling. That's why we're using. And I can assure you, we are using, and councillor Brooks knows this, a pen that says forward action. So that is meant, and you could be right.
But we had a member of the public who actually published yesterday all the names of the staff against the amounts. So it can be seen, so we need to look at that document that's going online in some better way of redacting those names.
Okay.
I know one member of staff, if they don't care, but we have a responsibility.
But I'd just address that, because I understand where we are with G D P R and all the rest of it. I've already verbally spoke to all staff and none of them have got an objection. They are now willing to sign a document saying they have no objection to public money, and this is public money, going to them. They believe the public have a right to see what their salary is, justice has happened in the BBC. It's their decision, and if their decision is true. I'd like to point out, councillor Brooks, if there's only one member of staff, how would that redaction work? If I was working here alone and you redacted my name, how could that possibly, possibly stop them not putting two and two together?
I can't answer that.
No, that's a speculative question.
No, it's, it's just your name shouldn't be there.
May I interject this, but then we, no, we, I, I understand and appreciate you're, you're raising the point because it is something, if we're going to redact something, we may as well redact it properly.
Yeah. But it's not working because the printout's laser and there's a reaction between the ink and the laser.
Councillor Ennis, please.
Yeah, I, I will mention that, that's okay. Um, redaction is actually done in Adobe, and I've just checked and you can't see through it, so I don't know where this pen thing is coming in.
No, it's, it's not all Adobe, because they're just squiggles across on the website.
Councillor Brooks, if you could just let me finish this.
Sorry.
Um, and there's a second or third time you brought up the issue of authorisation of expenditure. Are you aware of how the Lloyds Bank account works? That's a rhetorical question, so I don't expect an answer. So what happens is that we get the invoices to send to each of the councillors that are authorised to authorised expenditure within Lloyds Bank. This, this is what happens. And then the, the invoices are looked at and examined as one of those signatories. I can say that I do give that a close examination, as do the other two signatories. If there are any questions, that question is immediately posed back and we get a response. If we're not satisfied with response, then the payment isn't authorised. Any one of the three councillors who, who does not authorise, an expenditure will not be released. So I'm struggling to understand, please wait. I'm struggling to understand your point of view here, because the, the process with Lloyds Bank allows us to actually authorise and view the invoices and expenditure in terms of where it goes from.
Can I just, just a second, just, just one second, councillor?
Misunderstanding, yes, sorry.
I'm going to allow this to be discussed at this meeting. And by the end of this particular piece of discourse, which is a little bit irritating as it stands, because it's wasting a lot of time here, I recognise that there is a strength of feeling and importance in getting the financial elements right. After this, I don't really want to see this kind of thing at any further meetings. Can we all agree that that is a sensible way forward? Carry on.
Yes, I think there's a misunderstanding, because I said there is no issue with the signatory bits. I've said that. I have no distrust and no issue with that, but we're going, the way, what happens is that we are required, an independent person from those signatures, say councillor, um, is supposed to verify them before this meeting. Now, in the good old days, we used to have two councillors sign chequebooks. And it was my job and another councillor's job to go through and check against the invoice. It's a double checking, which is required by audit. And we used to go through and initial the chequebook stuff. So what we're saying should be happening now is that it's an audit requirement to verify it, that we just look at the schedule of payments and check them against the invoices and the payments. And when it comes to council, we can say, fine, because we can ask the questions like, we get email after emails about what's this padlock for, what's that for? So we can ask that if it's me and Sally Anne that are doing it. It's a requirement that two people verify before the meeting. And I was told last year it would happen, but it hasn't happened, and that's my frustration. Now, shut up.
No problem at all.
Could, could I respectfully ask that, I'd love, could you tell me where you, where this is, where that is documented in the financial regulations?
It's not in our financial regulations, but it's part of the audit act that we do it. And it's in the audit reports that we don't follow governance and.
Okay, we, this.
And you can look at our minutes where people wanted, so it's not something I've made up.
Councillor Brooks. This is clearly quite a bit of discussion, and I think we should probably take this. If there is a lot to discuss, that it doesn't necessarily need to be in a meeting, I think we should do so online. Other than that, I think we should proceed with the meeting. I hear your points, councillor Brooks. I think there is a discussion to be had, but I don't think we should be necessarily trudging through some valuable time in this meeting to do so.
No, I would have set out, chairman.
Thank you.
And my goal is to limit this.
So unless there is any objection to anything, any of the figures that are actually within that, councillor Sally Anne Watworth, you were happy with the, the chairman, that the clerk's going to come back to you with the others? Very good. And so on block, let's do nine point nine six.
To do the amendment also on open hopper.
So it's conditional?
It's conditional on item fourteen.
Conditional on item fourteen being passed.
Very well. So the proposal is that conditional on item fourteen later in the agenda is passed regarding the open hopper, that we accept the financials that we can given from nine point one through to nine point six. Well, the proposal, thank you councillor Watworth. Do we have a second there? Thank you very much, councillor Nichols. All those in favour? Against? Councillor Brooks, would you like that recording, sir?
Please.
Thank you. How's Carrie? On to item number ten, councillor Nichols. Would you, would you care to introduce your papers?
Yeah, so, um, this is, um, a proposal to undertake initial inquiries with regards to a CCTV camera, uh, on or near the Woodland Trust car park, uh, on Brook Road, uh, near the primary school in that car park for the Woodland Trust land. So, uh, this is an area where there's plenty of families, across the primary school, and plenty of people go walking around in Woodland Trust area. Uh, but because it's out in the edge of town, uh, it's a very, um, remote area. There's a risk that the, might be significant antisocial behaviour or even crime going on, uh, in that area. So the proposal is to seek approval for, uh, the, uh, from Woodland Trust for the installation of a CCTV camera to deter this kind of behaviour, seek, uh, to seek planning permission and any other legal requirements for the installation of a CCTV camera and then tender for the contract to install the camera. Uh, so there may be some discussion that needs to be had before we approve that kind of thing, so, uh, that's.
Thank you very much for your paper. Go ahead, councillor.
You mentioned the possibility of antisocial behaviour.
Yeah.
It could be, has to be.
Well, okay, so that's, um, maybe one of the things that we need to adjust this. Uh, and I suppose what the proposal should be, uh, really, is to find out what the data are regarding this. Um, so I believe actually that, um, the person to contact is Hugh Crouch at Woodland County Council. So if this council is in agreement and we amend the proposal for me to be authorised to contact Hugh and actually discuss with him, uh, what the data say, so are there any police reports? Yeah, I have my feelings as anecdotal evidence, as somebody who lives around there, but, uh, we need the actual data, I agree. So that could be an amendment to the proposal, you can vote on that.
Having, having visited the site, I would suggest that's, um, yeah, anecdotally quite likely place, man, so should I, yeah, councillor Brooks, you have something to say?
Okay. Thank you. And yes, I was, um, I fear this item being on the agenda, because I was on the council when the school contract was drawn up and it was very, um, controversial, because it's not our contract for the Woodland Trust. It belongs to the Woodland Trust, this car park, and at least was drawn up with quite strict things that they can't do there. And it was a very unpleasant time, and that's all I'm going to say about it now, because it's ten years ago. Um, so, but my, my concern is, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't be looked into, but the first concern is like, who's going to pay for it? What budget? Because there's no power there. Um, it's not our land, it's leased to the school, so maybe they should be looking into it. Um, and also, there's the plan which may be going to appeal across the road, and part of that plan. And part of that plan includes a new car park. So it could be that if a new car park's put in there, that they should be discussing it. I'm not saying it is going to happen, but, you know, I've got a feeling it will go into appeal because it's a big thing. But if it is successfully appealed, then maybe you could be discussing with the developer about security in that car park. But to finish off, I don't actually believe can be more a deterrent or crime because there's, I'll give you one example, if you go by on the dry night past the Queen statue, you probably want to cross the road because of the smell from what's been spelt and that whole area is covered by an AK camera, which is visible with lights. So I don't believe it's a deterrent because from what I was told from another councillor, one of the legal uses is the laughing gas up there. And at the one time, they found lots of the silver canisters, but it's not going to stop them because they do it in Tesco's car park under CCTV.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. I think that it's, I mean, my personal opinion on the matter is that it can support the community at large, at least to.
Yeah, maybe.
For a better.
Work on it.
That's councillor Ainsley.
Thank you very much indeed, chair. I'd like to propose an amendment. I wholly endorse this, that we should at least investigate it very little and that may well be problems with wifi coverage, as I said, who knows? But how about consideration of additional lighting, whether that might alleviate the problem? It may not be economically feasible, but I think perhaps if you're happy to accept an amendment, that we not only consider CCTV, but the possibility of additional lighting.
Councillor Watson.
Okay. I've used this car park for donkey's years, literally since it was built. And I've used it daily, in the morning and in the evening. And there's never been any cause for me to be concerned about any antisocial behaviour. The antisocial behaviour that happens up there happens further up where the old shooting range used to be. For those that don't know, you won't know. But up on the hill, over the trees, that's where all the antisocial behaviour happens. I mean, there's been times when they've taken settees and whatever else up there and made it into quite a comfy little place. It doesn't happen in the car park. Yes, we have seen the little canisters that they, but they do that everywhere. So I don't think having CCTV there. And there isn't any electricity into the car park, there are no lights in there. So whoever was to take it on would have to pay to have all the electricity put into it, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's going to be quite a large money spender if we have to go down that route of investigating. I mean, I'm quite happy for somebody to go and speak to the Woodland Trust and just see where we stand with it. But I don't think we should be taking it any further until we know where the Woodland Trust stand on it.
Can I propose that we, somebody else from the council, because of the two councillor roles, that we don't rubbish this because obviously if there is, he wants to investigate, sorry, councillor wants to investigate with Hugh Crouch. I mean, could we not set up a working group if councillor Nichols is happy that, so that this can be looked at in a bit more depth and if it is felt that it's needed? Because Hugh does know a lot of what goes on in Oakham related with his contacts with the police. So would you be happy if, I think Paul is going to do an amendment. If I added to it, if Paul is happy as well, that we set up a working group? Perhaps it's a working group with you and Clark that's allowed to carry on, just do a bit more.
Yeah, I'd be happy with all of those. As I say, it's, the first step is really getting the data to see whether this is actually necessary or not. So I'm happy with all the amendments that are being proposed.
Yeah. Okay, so, didn't you have something to say councillor Ainsley?
No, fine.
Sort of half cocked.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is probably distressing enough.
Waving.
Very well, so given the conversation that proceeded, would you care to put forward any amended proposal, councillor?
Yes, so the proposal would be for me to contact, set up a working group with me and the clerk, who would then contact Hugh Crouch to discuss the data to see if there is the necessity for a CCTV camera. And then we can bring that back to full council and discuss how we proceed after this.
Of course.
And see what the costs are.
With the consideration of extra lighting, which is, you could check that one.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
As long as it's downwards and not light polluting.
I'll respect that proposal.
Oh, thank you very much councillor Brooks. All those in favour of that proposal? There we are, that's unanimous. Yeah, that's passing the ball. Superb, thank you very much councillors. On to item number eleven, councillor Ainsley's paper on twinning association.
I have a.
Pass the parcel.
Pass the parcel, yeah, so everybody have a look at it.
Looking all the way. But you've already done it.
No, you haven't.
Talked of it.
So the suggestion is that Oakham and District Twinning Association seek permission to use respectfully adapted town crest and embroidered pen as shown there in the example. There's any questions? I think the rest is in the papers, if there's any questions, have a good answer.
Councillor Watson.
Just, so this is just that emblem of things to do with the twinning?
Correct.
You're not expecting us to change all our bits to have that on it?
Why would you?
I don't know, I'm just clarifying in my own brain that that is what you're saying. You, it's just for the twinning.
Simply for the adoption, because it's Oakham Town Council's crest and because the Twinning Association are looking to modify that crest respectfully, then it needs to come to council for it to be approved, otherwise it won't be used. They'll have to find another thing to actually. I'll just be done, sorry. Did I bail off? Did I stop in sentence?
Councillor Brooks, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, but I do remember, and I don't know whether it's got lost by the way, but I believe we have a standing order that says that people can't amend it or use it. It may have gone by the way, but it was when I did an advert and the reason came back, I did an advert for the town council on my blog and it became a standing, people couldn't use the town council crest.
The people are standing order.
But I think that's fine. I think they should also be allowed to be given permission if they're going to go and visit these places, that maybe it could be double sided and we have Oakham Town Council on it as well. Because that's who they're twinning with, it's Oakham Town.
Sorry councillor Ainsley, if you have a.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I think that's an unnecessary amendment, but that's, but take it to work.
I don't have a problem providing that standing order got chucked out. But I have a feeling, but I wish I can't remember all that standing orders, but I can't. But we need to check it, that it's not in there.
Well, assuming that that isn't the case then.
I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, so we can put in with the provider that it doesn't contravene our standing orders. And if it does.
We'd bring it back.
And we're going to amend it. With the standing order to amend.
Yeah, yeah.
Lovely.
Is it going to host us anything?
No.
I'm just asking the question.
Sorry, that was, that was, I'm sorry, I apologise, no.
That's why I'm supporting it.
Superb, so therefore with the amendment to bring back the provisor that it doesn't contravene an existing standing order and if it does, that this should be brought back to the next meeting with the accompanying standing order for us to amend at that meeting. Is everyone in second? I'll have you second in that, councillor Brooks, fantastic. All those in favour? Lovely, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Splendid, okay, so item number twelve, if it's all right with everyone, I'll propose this, that we move just the consideration which this is of the draft budget from the finality of Oakham group to after item fifteen, just so we don't have any misunderstanding with.
Oh, right.
We've put in the car with all the horse, so as it were. Because we've got a number of items that have a pecuniary constraint to them. If we address those prior to our acceptance of item twelve, which is the provision of budget, it perhaps makes a little bit more sense. So I'll propose that, do I have a second there?
So is it going after the fifteen?
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, well, there's one on Belt and Brooks, is all those in favour? Superb, thank you. Okay, so item twelve, project move on. So item number thirteen, which is the CCTV item.
Okay.
Hugh Crouch?
Yeah, I'll be brief, I think Crouch came because, you know, didn't put it in the report because it's always there. Obviously, there's been significant investment in CCTV in Oakham and everybody can see that. If you look around everywhere, nearly everywhere, I think none of the densities are quite high. I think you've got twelve to sixteen CCTV cameras in Oakham, I'm not exactly sure of the number, but there aren't many places that I haven't seen one, especially on the High Street. And obviously that investment comes with, as it says in this document, a maintenance issue. Obviously, we're dealing at the moment with Rutland County Council. Who knows what we'll deal with at the moment? And you can see from this report that Rutland County Council, the author here, Hugh Crouch, is seeking an annual contribution of five minus eight hundred, which will be linked to inflation to support the ongoing operational cost of the CCTV. I've seen enough evidence to say, I'm like, some councils here, that that does have a real impact and is already leading to the police making significant gains into criminal activity in this town. Obviously, we have to keep all of that under the wraps. But I am assured by Hugh Crouch, who knows what he's talking about, as councillor Brooks says, that this is a very, very key aspect of our, what ours is to keep criminal activity down to a low point. It's working well at the moment, we're having arrests and we're having identification thanks to it. So my view is this council has to consider this seriously. I'm only the town clerk, so I'm getting used to it for you. Consider whether you can provide some good value for money for the residents of Oakham.
Councillor Harris.
Two points if I may. Five thousand eight hundred pounds. What have we paid this year or what have we paid?
We've never paid anything.
We've never paid anything?
Because this is.
Okay, and you're saying that it is providing benefits which you're not able to or willing to say? Surely the idea of this is a deterrent? And if we are finding people committing offences and they're taken to court and they're convicted, we should be telling people about it, saying that actually, these aren't dummy cameras, they're real cameras. And if you're selling drugs or drunken behaviour or whatever it may be, the CCTV cameras are watching you and you will be held accountable. So I'm not sure about that. So the first part, that we're paying five thousand eight hundred that we've not paid before. But the second part, surely we should publicise the fact that they work and they are working well.
Can I reply to that? Obviously councillor Harris, this is not our equipment. Obviously, we've got someone from RCC who could address that. And we could ask Hugh Crouch to actually come to a meeting if you want to. But all I can say is I had two on meeting with him, hour and a half, two on meeting, and he gave me details that are not for the public to make and made it very clear to me that the statistics behind the use of the CCTV is a key element of keeping Oakham safe. And those are his key words.
Now, it's very subjective.
Of course it is, but he, and he said the police assured him, they work closely with the police and they are our first line of defence. And they made very clear to him that this is working and working well because the claim is way better than it's been before.
Thank you very much. Would you mind if we go to?
Well, it's.
Oh, go on.
I understand that, but what I'm talking about is providing evidence to criminals that if you conduct criminal activity in Oakham, you will be seen, you will be caught, you'll be prosecuted. If we, if we keep that to ourselves, not you, but if that's kept to ourselves, what's the point of having it? No one will know that you're going to get caught.
I think that that's, I'm sure that we can publicise that in some level of campaign. For the moment, I'm not entirely sure what the clerk has been told in confidence and I'm sure that is for good reason. But I think the overall theme of this is that when arrests, prosecutions and the like are made, that we certainly, yeah, hail that and publicise it widely. So I would support that. Councillor Brooks.
I agree. We, I've seen it because Hugh Crouch brought it to a public meeting, the laptop, and I believe there's now thirty-two very clear cameras, so it's the traders meeting. But I have an issue with it coming to our council because this is a Rutland County Council system which they paid for, I don't know how, or whatever. But we pay a lot of money to Rutland County Council, we're going to come to something else soon. The percentage of our precinct that's going back to Rutland County Council is astronomical. And I feel although this system is perfect, five thousand eight hundred is not a lot to Rutland County Council. It's a lot of money to us. When you're dealing within millions, it's not funny, you're dealing in millions. We're dealing in two hundred thousand and five thousand pound from that is a huge amount of money. I think Hugh, good man, you know, we have our ups and downs, but historically, but he has come to the wrong person. I think he should be going to the Police and Crime Commissioner because the police use this, the police can sit in a car park over there and log in and see it. That's how they catch people. But they can't, what I think Chris is saying is that they can't give up until there's convictions because of data protection, any figures of arrests or stories from it publicly. But we can say that it's wonderful. So I don't know, the Police and Crime Commissioner has funds, lots of money which are proceeds to crime. And I think five thousand eight hundred pounds from the Police and Crime Commissioner's pot wouldn't actually dent it that much because as a town, we haven't applied for anything from it. I believe the last time that they gave us money was when we needed a floodlights at the skate park and that was two hundred and fifty pounds from the Police and Crime Commissioner, not this current one, but past one. So it could be something the clerk could pass on if the council agreed.
Thank you very much, Skip.
Well, I'd like to.
Are you going to counsel?
Refer to directly, yeah, please. And I'd just say firstly on a positive, what's happened, and all credit to the licensed trade in Oakham, is they have cracked down on a lot of driver abuse and the like in the town and pushed it out of their pubs, they don't want it. And all credit to them for that. It is well known in the town that there is issues in the car parks and certain sites, which I'm in contact with the police on and resident bring to my attention, as I'm sure they bring to attention what it here, as well, most of our information comes from. I'm reluctant for us, as in RCC and OTC, to get into a them and us scenario, which I can feel building here. You know, I live in the town, I pay my council tax to Rutland County Council, you get a share of it. I don't care how you spend it, so obviously it's for the benefit of the people like myself in the town. So I, this artificial them and us, you know, Rutland's got huge amounts of money. Yes, we've got more money than you, we've also got massive commitments, like a lot of social care and the send transport budget, which is out of control. And five thousand pounds is not a small sum, let me assure you, Martin, it's not a small sum. And if every parish councillor in Rutland came to us and said, well, you're giving Oakham Town Council five thousand, we like some please, that wouldn't go down awfully well with the budget setters. Trust me. So, you know, it's, this is the county town, it's the biggest town in Rutland by miles. You know, if we crack it here, it's for the good of the county as a whole.
Thank you very much for your paper. I'm going to dive in on it at this point and let my thoughts be known. At the end of the day, this is a positive, I think we can all agree, theme. Rutland does oversee the entirety of Rutland, obviously, and this is to do exclusively with the CCTV within Oakham. So I think that some of the burden does certainly lie with us. I don't think, I mean, as you've said councillor Brooks, five thousand eight hundred is not a small amount of money for a parish council, but I think certainly some consideration. The only issue that I perhaps do have with this myself is that this, the proposal is essentially to agree at this point and have no measure of control over it thereafter because the proposal suggests that there is an annual contribution of five eight linked to inflation, which indicates to me. which indicates to me that that is a perpetual payment that is going to be ongoing. What I would certainly like to see is this, is that we agree a figure to Rutland County Council. Whether that be five eight or otherwise, I'm not so sure. However, that the ongoing nature of that is eliminated and we bring this back on an annual basis, if not more regularly. I think councillor Enzie, you have your hand up first.
Thank you very much indeed, Chair. I'd like to invite Hugh Crouch to come and chat to us. I think this is a new departure. I think that I would want, I'm not doubting anybody's word, but I'd like to see the quality of CCTV myself. I'd like to see the stats for myself. And I'd like to actually then chat about the stats and just see, particularly in the light of what was brought forward by councillor Nichols when he suggested another CCTV at Woodlands, that, you know, there's questions about the effectiveness. So I like all those questions to be posed or anything to Hugh Crouch. But in principle, I think it's fair and honest. I'd just like to actually do some due diligence by speaking directly, like giving us the opportunity to speak directly to Hugh Crouch. So I'd like to propose an amendment to that. That we actually invite him in and then make a decision.
So that we defer and come back, so have a meeting, defer...
Yeah, before the next meeting, we should get people to come in and talk to us or at the beginning of the next meeting or whatever's convenient.
Thanks councillor Enzie. Councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I would support that, but as the councillor mentioned about it's not fair to other parish councils. Now, I don't know whether the new system is the same as the old system. I know where it goes to and it's a shared point, but we can't give that out in public. But obviously, Uppingham feeds into it, Rutland Water feeds into it and any other locations that Rutland County Council have. So I'm wondering how fair that figure is. Well, at our Uppingham Town Council, because if you're talking about over ten thousand pounds, that's a lot of money to be paying for what they've listed there.
Well, I'm sure we'll get the opportunity, should we choose to defer at this point.
Yeah, I think it needs a proper chat. So I would support councillor Enzie.
So councillor Enzie has therefore suggested that we meet with Hugh Crouch prior to our next month's meeting. I'm going to suggest that we then defer this paper until such point as we've had a chance to meet with Hugh and discuss the merits and minutia of this particular scheme. So I thank you very much councillor Wasworth. All those in favour?
Do we need a...
On the second. That's all right.
That's it.
Or is that?
First set.
You have already. Councillor Wasworth seconded that. Sorry, is that, you've got that, Clark?
Yep.
And that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
And I'd just say, one of the things we've got to be very careful on, we have to, when we use the big grants to the citizens' advice and it always causes a problem, is our precept can only be spent to the benefit of the Oakham residents. So if you have something like Rutland's citizens' advice, we had to ask them when we gave them grants to show us that it was for the benefit of Oakham people. And in the end, they said, we don't want your money. So what Rutland County Council must show to us is that...
There should be a proportion.
That that is only going to cover the maintenance of Oakham because we can't do it for...
Yes, I would have thought so as well, but we shall obviously...
The only thing I would say, and I'm quite surprised, but this is his paper, not mine, is I know that roughly the cost to Rutland County Council of this system for us is about twenty to twenty-five K a year. So we don't have a lot of share of the cost of the system.
Well, it certainly colours a conversation. And we shall have every opportunity to discuss that at next meeting after our meeting with you.
Yep.
If you kindly put together an appropriate time, that'd be great, Clark. Thank you very much. On then to item number fourteen, the Oakham Hopper. And this is one for councillor Enzie and Clark.
So this is a joint paper between myself and the town clerk, a mini working group, I suppose, you could say, that are authorised. The thing is that we were in discussions with the RCC, very good discussions, very collaborative discussions. And we got some interesting, you may have seen these timetables. I did try to clarify what they meant and I have no damned idea, but we will, we will pursue them. I think the bit I want to point out is I think the hopper serves three distinctly useful purposes. As this is in my paper, accessible inclusion, promoting local attractions and supporting town events. So although this is a seven point four percent increase, there have been particular pressures on the transport fleet. So I am proposing that we accept the continued funding of the hopper bus at twenty-nine thousand and submit it to under review in partnership with Rutland County Council. I think that's the essential element. Thank you.
Councillor Harris?
I would love to see any statistics, any details about the utilisation. I said at the last meeting about the bus driving around with nobody in it. And since that meeting, I've seen it six times and there were three people in it once and nobody in the rest of the time. So this is gaining a lot of money. It's an increase above inflation. And I don't see, look, it's been, I've been here four years, never, never, I don't know where it stops until I read this, I don't know where it stops, I don't know its purpose, it's free, I don't know if I have a plan for getting on it. So if we're going to continue it, let alone spend seven percent more, we must, in my view, review the marketing and the promotional side of it so that we're getting proper utilisation. I can't stand to see money being thrown at something that's not being used for whatever reason. I'm quite happy to volunteer to participate in doing that.
Thank you very much councillor Harris. That's well received by me certainly.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's not used, but it does stop outside my house empty and probably three people a week use it. Not that I'm watching all the time, but it does trigger my CCTV productivity thing, so I know that it does run. I don't understand why we're paying so much or even being asked for this increase because it frustrates me because on the bus now, not only does it have our logo and Rutland County Council's at our request because they didn't use to put that on it. It now has funded by central government. And I think that there's something not quite right as well with the statistics because the last time this came to council, we had a sheet of paper that said over two hundred people, I think it was a week, use it. And I said, that's rubbish. But I guess how that worked because the man used to go like that. You know, they can't do it as much now because I have a bus pass where you have to tap it. But I doubt the figures because it is running most of the time empty. But it is a vital service for some of the older people. But I question whether we, at this stage, knowing that it was reported to cabinet, and I wasn't at that meeting and I'm relying on press coverage being correct, that Rutland County Council has an underspend of five hundred and something thousand pounds on its bus services. They just brought that up. I think, I can't ask the lady from the press who wrote about it, but that's what I read. There's an underspend. So I think for at least a year, we should be saying to Rutland County Council, we're not paying anything. And we need to look at this carefully because I had a resident contact me and said, it doesn't even come on to our estate anymore because they won't go over the humps. Well, they fly down the humps in my road and across the footpaths and everything. And, you know, I don't know what the problem is, but it needs a full review. And I won't be supporting paying twenty-nine thousand pounds for something which I can't, and there's no disrespect for Paul. He's worked on it, but I'm not happy to approve this tonight on the proviso that we continue working with Rutland County Council because this has been said before, not with Paul. It's been said before and then it just sits there and nothing gets done. And we've paid a hell of a lot of money out over the years for this service. And I think it needs a real strong review of the routes and...
So a general review?
Yeah, and consultation. I asked the resident to write. I don't know if she did, but she said it's useless. We don't even know what time it runs and they don't come on to our estate, so I have to get a taxi.
Could you kindly wrap up?
Yeah, sorry.
No, thank you councillor Brooks. I know it's a little irregular, but since we have a facility, if we could hear from councillor...
The half a million is not to do with the bus. There is a half a million underspend. It's a technical underspend on the entire budget of the council. It's not specific to the bus. I don't know where that came from.
The bus to everything.
It's not specific to that. Half a million, you can't, it wouldn't, no, it's to the general budget generally. On the bus point, can I point, I think your review idea, can I mention of course that we now, since a year has gone by, we now have the Call Connect system up and running and proving itself to be highly popular and successful. I think five thousand extra journeys and that. Now, it may well be that in the light of that, maybe the Oakham Hopper and possibly even the Uppingham Hopper need to re-evaluate their service generally and look at maybe some connection with Call Connect, maybe a development of the system because it's, you know, a completely new system. We've gone away from set routes in the lane to the Call Connect system. You're still operating here in Oakham, a set route system. Maybe there's room for a new development of growth in that field, I would suggest.
Thank you very much councillor Payne.
Thank you.
As I sort of suggest, this is a, it is a useful service. There's obviously a need for transportation. But I would be inclined to agree with councillor Harris as a, as a, yeah, someone who is in Oakham an awful lot. I see the buses and the Call Connect buses as well. But not a tremendous, there's not an in-your-face ability to see immediately what the service is, where it operates from or anything else. So I would certainly support a greater level of publicity surrounding that. And I think there's certainly a conversation to be had. Moving on to councillor Wasworth, she was very patiently.
Well, I'd just like to say, because I live on the outskirts of Oakham rather than the inside of Oakham, I've got a bus stop outside my house that is used very regularly. I mean, there's always people getting on and off the bus outside my house continually all day. So maybe, down where the president is, it's far to walk from the town. Maybe they need to expand hours rather than going inwards. That's, you know, so yes, I agree, we do need to keep the hopper bus running, but maybe we need to review the actual route. And I know that he does stop where people ask him. If there are regular people on that bus, he will stop halfway down, long stairway, just to drop off anyone at the house or... Or, I mean, sometimes he stops at the top of Crown Wall where I work and I know he drops some people off there, but that's not on list. But he quite often drops them off there so they can go into the market. So to say that he's not flexible is not true.
I don't know if the accusation's made that he's not flexible, but it's, I personally don't feel it's well publicised, I mean, perhaps.
Publicity's always been a problem with it because I've always been harping on about that.
But I think on balance, everyone supports it largely. Clark, sorry, apologies.
No, it's okay. I apologize briefly. Obviously, me and councillor Enzie had two meetings with staff from RCC on this matter. The first issue that is really tricky and councillor Enzie had me press this is it's very difficult to change the route because of the fact that it's free. And because it's free, the private sector who run most of the routes around Oakham and all the rest of it can contest because we are offering a free subsidised service against their argument. If we go anywhere near their routes, then the staff said it's really tricky because we've got to, there have been cases up and down apparently in the UK whereby a subsidised route is, yes, it's a competition. So I'm just making it clear of that. I agree with what the chair has said. Let's be clear about this. This is ten percent of our precept. So it's a significant feedback to Rutland County Council. In negotiations, Rutland County Council officers have made it quite clear, this is nowhere like a fifty percent subsidy. So in other words, the cost to them is significantly more than fifty K. They wouldn't give me the exact figure, but they said it was significantly more. They agree that free, the fact it's free is not very well advertised. I think I agree with that. I did some sums. The cost per passenger at the moment is something like three pounds to four pounds a passenger per trip. So it's, well, it is.
It's a lot more. One pound ninety-eight.
No, that's half. You've got to put in RCC's...
Top two.
Yeah, yeah. So, because obviously the twenty-nine K we see is only a small margin compared to the actual cost of the total service. So it's, it is cost and they cannot change it and that's where we are. We are not, the only thing I have to say as your town clerk, we have no contract with RCC and have never signed a contract with them, with the Oakham Hopper. There was a move when I joined the council to do it, but that member of staff moved on, so no signatures have ever been put on a contract between us and RCC as to how much we pay.
Councillor Brooks?
So I was on the council when this was introduced and it was a big centre bus pulled out. They said the route wasn't feasible and there was a law then, I don't know if it's changed, the reason the county council came to us was because councils, under the changes of the nineteen eighties or something, couldn't run a chargeable bus service. And I think the time has come, and I would like to do a proposal, that more work is done of this as we don't have a contract with them to do it, is that we can change routes if we're going to include, want to include residents that want to use it. Like a complete estate is excluded because someone chose to just stop going there. Don't know who decided that, but I think this needs more work to come back to council. And there needs to be a contract drawn up so that we know where we're going, what is going to happen, where the bus is going to go. And there needs to be publicity because that bus service, I don't know if things may have changed, but that bus service used to get used. I don't know whether it's because people used to use passes, but when it was centre bus, it was used. But when it became the hopper, it's become very little used. I don't know if it's because it's the mini buses or what, but I can't, I mean, the fact that we had no formal agreement with Rutland County Council gives me the excuse to actually say, I can't accept that we pay this. And I'll shut up now, but I would like to not stop the service, but it needs to be properly...
I myself don't disagree with the idea that we perhaps visit this as a more holistic viewpoint. Councillor Enzie?
Yeah, so as we draw the debate to a close, I just wanted to actually reiterate what was just said. To actually knock over a couple of things that had been said. So categorically stated, this is not funded by central government.
Well, it's got a load on it.
I don't care what it's got on it, but it is not funded by central government. It's funded by combinations from ourselves, contributions from ourselves and also from RCC. Somebody doubted the stats. I know how the stats are compiled and I did actually ask, we did actually ask at the meeting how the stats were compiled. And what happens is he ticks them off as they get on to the bus and they get off the bus. So the number of, somebody else said it's not utilised and, well, in the two weeks I ended up quickly, we had three hundred and eighty-three on week one, the first the tenth, the seventh the tenth, the eighth the tenth, the fourteenth the tenth, we had three hundred and seventy-three. So that's a substantial number of people. And I think that we are in the middle of looking at a route review primarily because we wanted to actually expand the usability of the Oakham Hopper. So supporting town events, I think, is a useful thing. So for example, and they came back with a cost. We also wanted to promote local attractions. So on certain days, we run out to, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, what to call for people to go up and visit. And we have to be careful, as actually said, because of the the investment by the route, the, whatever that damn service is called, the Call Connect service. But actually, I do, I personally believe that this is actually very good for the people of Oakham. I think that if we diligently look at promoting local attractions and supporting town events, I personally believe that actually this would work out well. I did some quick calculations and I'm sure there's a hundred ways, there's stats and all the rest of it. But I looked at the total number for the year generally for twenty twenty-five and it came out at one pound forty-five per journey. So the amount we're paying. So there are, I can understand, I can under... So, so there are, I can understand, I can, I don't know what the RCC contribution, we did ask, oh, we did ask the question, what happens if we stop payment? And they said the likelihood, and I think that's, the likelihood that the service would be suspended. So that's the likelihood, that's not, that's not black and white. Okay, I've finished, thank you.
Can I just, whoever has the next conversation with whoever sets up this thing, could we check, because you have the Bronston Village at Sevenfield fifty-five, which is the only bus that picks up the children out, those children aren't going to Palace anymore, that bus doesn't need to go out there anymore.
That's, I'm sorry. I didn't understand this at all.
I think that's so.
So that just needs to be clear, whether they still need to run out of Bronston or not.
I, I think that, if I may paraphrase a little, it seems to me that we are all in support of this, that it is, it is resolutely a good idea. Some of us might be a little bit concerned about the increase. My, again, my tuppence being that I wouldn't necessarily have a problem, but one, one thing that I might put on, if you will, councillor Ainsley, accept it, is that, obviously you've put subject one going with you, but that, that we do actually actively engage with further conversation with RCC to debate about possible changes to routes, to expand the service and to potentially give us a little bit more reach to certain, well, the quinted places.
I'm happy to accept that. Also invite anybody who is interested, come along to the meetings.
Absolutely.
If you have a strong point of view, then make your voice heard at the meetings.
Absolutely. Indeed.
Go ahead, she would make it. I'm thinking of anybody who'll come along and actually support the discussions.
Thank you councillor Ainsley, yes.
I would like to reemphasise that I think it's pretty dangerous for us, because we have it with the street fighting thing, how we have that huge increase because of contract loss. And I would like before we agree anything that we have this working group and we actually get some formal contract, because when, I can't remember the exact figure, but when we first agreed this, I think we paid about ten thousand pounds, so over the years, it's now gone up threefold and they're talking about a percentage increase each year, but there's no, you know, the lights did go because of the energy thing and the understanding on that contract, which we don't have anymore, they don't have, was that it was to increase at five percent each year, but because of the energy increase, it went up thousands sooner last year and I don't want that to happen with the hopper bus. And I think, I think as a council, we should be having some sort of contract, that's ten percent as it's been mentioned of our precept and we have no formal agreement and we're just handling it.
Well, if I might make a counterpoint councillor Brooks to that, we are, in my opinion, we are at least giving a horizon to this particular expenditure and it is exclusively in twenty-five, twenty-six and subject to ongoing review. So for me, I realise that there's importance in having a, a good working, robust contract in place for, for certain things. I think working on a bilateral agreement basis with RCC in good faith, as we have been doing and, and subject to them being able to, amenable to discussing things like route and general availability and possible changes, I don't at this point myself have an issue with how this is being approached. Do we have any further?
Just one is the amendment.
The amendment, sorry, that was, I'll have to whiz back on tape for this one. Just that we.
I can suggest something from the conversations, kind of feel like.
Please.
Our Oakham Town Council pleased to continue funding the hopper bus, subject to ongoing review in partnership with Rutland County Council with a view to drawing up a formal contract.
Yep. I second it or third it.
When we're not finished with work, that we will draw out a formal contract.
Well, we may step away, so I'd say with a view, if the, if the contract terms, so bring it back.
The contract has to come from RCC clearly because they're the ones who operate it, not ourselves, we can't.
But we have to agree.
We have to agree.
With a view to.
That's seconded by councillor Wasworth. All of those in favour of accepting this particular paper in its amended form? Against? I stayed in.
You'd want to recall now.
Every minute that councillor Harris has opted to join, but please, I'd like to stitch him up, make sure he's going to come.
Well, well, security, you're getting invited, aren't you?
Do you have that on that?
On my camera, that'd be good.
Thank you very much. Lovely, thanks very much. Everyone, on then to item number fifteen.
Well, it's gone backwards, isn't it? Oh no.
When are we picking up twelve?
After fifteen.
After this, okay.
Councillor Ainsley?
Yeah, sorry about this.
Who are you?
Yeah, believe me, I have a week. We have, been a lot of work going on with Melanie and myself in pursuance of the last council resolution. And in pursuit of that resolution, we've come up with three distinct roles, a heritage architect, a specialist solicitor and a possibility of financial advisory services, a grant writer. So the, we have, the proposal was, or is, to approve the appointment of a heritage architect pair drawings. We had a meeting this afternoon because the, and if you look at the papers sat on your desk, there were some substantial changes to the bid from Kingsmead Design, which actually was, was brought to us by Clarks Construction. I sincerely believe that because of the, we did initially vote twenty thousand pounds, that's what we voted for the actual, and it's, it's clear that with, that from the, both, both quotes from Mills and from Edison's are in the circa eighteen K, eighteen five and Kingsmead Designs were largely north of that with a one of revised quote of thirty-five thousand eight hundred because they had included V eighteen, that's excluding V eighteen, we have an equal playing field. Now, there's also been some movement in that councillor Harris would like to say about the fact there is a local architect who may well be interested. So I would like to propose that we defer item one until such times as we have three, possibly an additional quote and that, and we'll also have the quotations from the specialist solicitor, which I think is going to be instrumental in our decision. After all, this is a significant investment and probably the biggest project that Oakham Town Council has undertaken, I could well be wrong, but it seems significant to me. And it would be useful to get a full idea of what the heritage architect costs are going to be and what the solicitor's bill is going, likely to be. The thing we won't have of course is the actual cost for the works, but with the specialist solicitor, we, the discussion that was had with him before they come back with a quotation for the work necessary is that we would be looking to restrict our investment to, so that we are protect, so the public money is protected, whether that, it's actually coming from Sill, so it is precept, but it, but that money needs to be protected and for now and for the future, so that we're not railroaded in some sort of development. So that would be very important to actually, and this listener has said that there are mechanisms to do that and that we would then to get a substantial lease for our investment. So I think that if we were to treat this as a discussion paper and that I would like to withdraw proposal one, that we actually decide on a building or a heritage architect at this stage primarily because I think it'd be more useful for council to get a complete view of the likely cost other than the building costs, which is going to have to come once we have a heritage architect make their, do their necessary work. I think that'd be far more useful to council. The only thing against that.
Councillor Ainsley, apologies, are you suggesting that we, if we're drawing, deferring?
I, sorry, yes, bad wording, thank you very much. Deferr until December, until we've got the necessary information together. I think it's all a bit rushed at the moment and this is not something we should be rushing. So I, I think that, to defer that for the approval of the heritage architect, which has the unfortunate consequence that we are being told by the trustees that the Victoria Hall is likely to have to be mothballed post-Christmas. Now, they were talking, things are very fluid and they were talking about actually perhaps being able to drag on for a little while longer, but nonetheless, the longer we delay our decision, especially in the light of the fact we have to give six months' notice here, so any decision we do make, and if we do get the position where we have to give six months' notice, there's a further six months than any decision we make. So there, there is a bit of pressure to say, if we're going to have the hall, then that should be done in good time, but it does seem to me that this being such a major contract that it's not a decision to be rushed. I have concluded, thank you.
Thank you. If, sorry councillor Brooks, you have a query?
No, I want to say something because you said it's a discussion paper, councillor Ainsley.
I'm, I'm suggesting that's where we go, yes.
But only when you're ready for me to talk.
I'm.
Because I have a couple of questions about past resolutions and as well, and concerns.
Yeah, go ahead councillor Brooks.
Okay, and we talk about six months leaving here, I have a very serious concern if the trustees are now at the stage of practically giving up, why have they not gone to the charity commission and gone into liquidation where the charity commission would appoint people to sort it out? Why have we not moved there? Six months ago, I believe it was, we sat here and I made an amendment and we voted to move there. We had a contract drawn up for five years rental and we asked the office to ask the solicitors to look at it and ask the solicitors to contact the trustees to extend it from five years because of the cost of moving. Nothing was done. No, it hasn't been done because we've got no legal fees for those solicitors. So you said to me councillor Ainsley, we've moved on from there, you made the decision that nothing would happen. Now, if we'd moved, gone through that, we'd probably be moving in this month and at the end of the day, I wouldn't care, because I know the rent was cheaper, if we were paying the same rent here, there, and then the trustees would have an income so we could work towards improving things by being there. So I would like an explanation of why the council's resolution was ignored and why at the last time this was brought to council, we made a resolution that we spend up to twenty thousand pounds on a consultant's report to give us the information we need to make that final decision to move in this month or December, January. Where's that report? I'll sit down because it, you know, there were, there are two resolutions from this council that have not been acted on. Quite important and why, sorry, can I stand up again? Why are we going, I'm pleased we deferred that because if we did take it on in whatever capacity, I would hope we'd be going down the road of lottery heritage grants and they paid for all that. I did a, a grant application which came nowhere for Melton Road in the town and we went to Market Harbour, a group of councils years ago, and everything was paid for by lottery heritage because they want to see that their money is spent properly. We don't even need somebody to write up a grant application, they do that with you and you get nice tin cake by the way.
Thank you.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Please.
Go ahead.
So I, I think unfortunately, you believe that everything is set in aspect, this is a very fluid situation, the, the trustees did not want to extend a lease agreement to us, although we did agree it in council, remember it isn't just our agreement, we have to have the agreement with the trustees to accept the lease. And so the trustees are in a position now where they're saying that we, we can't even go staggering on until Christmas, we may have to mothball the whole thing. So if we'd moved in, there was no offer of a lease given back to us from the trustees, so they, they didn't, they didn't actually physically withdraw that offer, but the fact that they were going to actually mothball the premises and that couldn't, we, moving in, could not support their ongoing expenditure and it made, that they were unable to continue, made it a moot point whether we moved in. I, I'm thoroughly pleased that the trustees were so open and honest with us. So I actually, I, I think we need to get away from looking at this as a, a solid set in stone or set in aspect, set of circumstances. There is, there is a great deal of work to be done on the premises, there's a huge amount of expense to be invested in those premises and it isn't simply a case of saying we had a council resolution and therefore why have we ignored it? Nobody has made a decision in this council to actually stop that lease going forward. That is a decision of the trustees.
But that wasn't reported.
Please, please Martin, don't interrupt.
Sorry, I want to finish.
So the, I, I would, the, the position of grants, yes, I could not agree more, there has been initial feelers put out about grants, but these, these things do not move at pace. So, but yes, it is being considered. So I'd like to stand by the proposal that says we withdraw item one and use this as a discussion stroke, information update.
Thank you councillor. And I come back one just last.
Very briefly.
What I find frustrating is that that is the first I've heard that Victoria Hall trustees didn't want to do anything with our lease. That should have been reported back to council because we had a legal resolution saying most people in this room thought we were going to be moving there. So I, I personally, I would like to walk away from it because that building will not go to wrong. If, if the trustees cannot manage it, and I look this up, they should be going for voluntary liquidation to the charity commission who will then appoint trustees, it's happened in a community centre in Leicestershire, and they find solicitors and people as temporary trustees and they work on getting it back up and running and then they appoint trustees from the community when they are satisfied. Because, to be honest, if we go down this route of paying forty-eight thousand pounds, where are we going to get the money from to actually do the work, which we've been told is going to cost in the region of four hundred thousand pounds? So with it being mothballed, it's going to deteriorate because the heating is obviously not going to be on and I, I just think we will be wasting money now doing anything else on this. We should work with the charity commission and say, as a council, we're willing to take it on, but I don't think this is necessary at this stage to keep spending money. And we did do a resolution that we were going to get professionals to report to us this month. That was the twenty thousand pound budget and I don't have a report, no disrespect to you councillor Ainsley, but I don't have a professional report in front of me that we were promised.
So, okay, I appreciate both sides of, well, I don't think they're conflicting viewpoints to be quite honest. It's clear to me that, as councillor Ainsley suggested earlier, this is a huge project, enormous, and I think we all appreciate that. I understand councillor Brooks that you're concerned with we passed a resolution to move in there, however, I think it's.
Was it coming out?
But also it is absolutely proven that we do so and we approach the whole Victoria Hall with great caution. I appreciate what you're saying regarding the fees that we're spending and the lines off. Now, what we are afforded presently, having not taken occupancy of this building at the current time, is that we still have the full ability to do as we may. We can walk away from it, as you suggested, we can go in as, as we originally planned, but we can at least from this place manage our level of risk, I think, appropriately. I hear what you're saying about the grant applications and I think that's certainly something that we should approach potentially the trustees and by extension the charity commission about to try to get perhaps a bit of a roadmap as to what the various outcomes might be from this. Because I don't think the Oakham Town Council should be footing the bill in its entirety, I would not support that in any, in any sense. I think there is funding and available resource out there from large bodies to help this sort of thing on. Councillor Wadsworth?
Did the trustees give us a reason why we, our lease wasn't up to scratch?
Simply they, they couldn't, they couldn't run the hall on that because they didn't have the business and, because of the refinance, that's what he said.
I'm a bit confused because if I was a business, if somebody was offering to move into the business. and somebody was offering to move into the business to pay me money so that I could afford to have things to look, I'd go for it.
May I come back on that?
But I just, in my mind, but obviously I'm just a woman, you know.
Don't, don't, don't. I'm going to say that.
If we were in there and we were paying the Victoria Hall rent that they're not getting at the moment, surely that's a bonus for them rather than a headache? I mean, they've got the lady that's still at the front, that's still paying rent. What happens to her when they mothball it? There's the dog groomer at the back that's paying rent. What happens to her when they mothball it? The grain store run the upstairs, so, you know, what's going on there? I mean, did they pay rent to have the bar there or they? I don't know what the situation is with the bar, but I know it was all done out for the grain store at one stage because the gentleman from Wheatcheek was going to take it on. And then he was messed about by the trustees. Like, we're being messed about by, from what I can see. But, you know, this sort of money that they're asking us for to do all these things, it would have been lovely if we had that sort of money. But we haven't got that sort of money. But the Victoria Hall, if we moved in there, would be getting some kind of money in their pocket that they seem to be saying, oh no, that's not good enough for us.
They don't want to.
I certainly appreciate what you're saying, councillor Wadley, sorry. I think from a short term perspective, that is something that perhaps would be a bit of a consideration. However, long term, I don't think that our occupation, this is only my personal view, I don't think that our occupation would be a sufficient stay to ensure the long term improvement and sustainability of that building in its current form. I think perhaps certainly more funding is needed. The methodology that we approach going in there needs to be reviewed because I am aware that statutory bodies occupying certain buildings preclude you from certain types of funding, for instance. So I think it's an incredibly delicate and complex situation. And until we've got at least a basic understanding of the long term effects of what we're going to do and the costs importantly to the council, I think that we should approach this quite cautiously.
I'm just concerned that we're going to be spending more money on something that isn't going to happen.
But this is.
Like the Princess Avenue. We spent a lot of money on Princess Avenue, getting pictures drawn and things done. And now that's gone on a back burner, but we've spent money on it. And now we're doing the same with the Victoria Hall. We're going into the Victoria Hall, we're looking at this needs doing and this needs doing and that. But these things have been needed to be done for years. It's not like it's just happened.
No, but we've now, for instance, the survey, that's necessary to understand the full scope of what we would be walking into, whether we're directly responsible for financials of remedying those situations or otherwise. But at least now we have full visibility of what actually needs doing from a building's perspective.
Which is fine, but why go spending even more money on something that, to me, looks like the trustees don't want us in there? Because they're not giving us anything.
They're not debating.
No, sorry, yes, I've.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying the resolution is to defer that, not to debate.
Right, and then it was an open paper to discuss, so that's what I was doing. But, okay, if we want to just defer the whole thing, then let's get on with it.
Can I make a proposal? But I just want to see how councillor is built about it. Because it's based on the view that we have no legal responsibility and we have helped them out. We've spent money, taxpayers' money on a boiler and other things, I can't list them all. And I get the impression from not being told, I'm quite disappointed that we weren't told, this was probably known some time ago.
I didn't know that.
No, I didn't know either. And you're part of the working group, that they don't want us there. That's what's being said. Well, they said they wouldn't, we had a lease that we agreed, but we wanted it legally checked.
This sounds quite speculative, councillor.
No, no, but we've been told that they don't want to give us a lease. That's what came out, wasn't it? Am I wrong? They don't want to give us a lease. We came to council and we agreed, but wanted it legally checked. So what I want to do is propose, let the trustees that are legally responsible sort their own mess out. When they go for grants, they have to come to the local authorities to get support. You cannot get a grant for that type of money without the support of your local council. I did it with the church in London. These things take time, they've got to be done properly. The church in Bloomsbury took four years to get the lottery gone sorted and it was done perfect. Now, so my proposal is that we don't actually do anything more on the Victoria Hall from this evening. But it's not completely throwing away any help. But I think if the trustees are going to mothball it, it's going to deteriorate because those buildings need heating over the winter. And I think they need to be strongly advised that they go to the Charity Commission and say, we don't have any money to continue. And the Charity Commission will take the action that is required to safeguard that property, which the trustees don't seem to be able to do. That's their only responsibility, is to safeguard that property. It's not our, it's not a community centre, we've been told that, it's for the community. It is not, it's a private trust.
Going to have to.
Yeah, sorry. My proposal is that the council.
Councillor Brooks, I just.
Can I do the proposal?
No, you can't. Just because I need to.
Have to say, just need to say.
Yeah, sorry. I'll sit down, then if I can stand up, just do a third proposal that we walk away. I don't know how we word it, but.
I propose that we extend this session of council by another 30 minutes if necessary. Do I have a second there? Thank you councillor Wadley, all of those in favour? That is unanimous, thank you very much. Councillor Wadley.
Yeah, so my proposal is that the council stops any work that's going on with the trustees, but we don't give up on it. If they come back to us for the support of their grants and that, that we would obviously as a council support it on the basis that we have no legal whatever. And we have been spending a lot of money on them, which is unfair if it is now going to be mothballed. We've probably spent over £20,000. And that's a lot of money for them to just turn around and say, we're going to close the door this week. So I don't know how to word it, but I want us to make the decision that we discontinue any work on this. So I don't know if you can help me chairman, discontinue any work. But at the same time, we send the message out to the trustees that if they require our support in the future with the grant applications, which is what they're going to need to do, then we will support that. So it's two bits in the proposal.
So your proposal is essentially, just for clarity to my understanding, that we cease any ongoing work that will incur.
Incur costs. It doesn't stop, Mr Ainsley and Sally Anne still want to continue chatting with them and finding out how things can go forward.
And that we collaboratively work alongside the trustees of Victoria Hall to see whether, to seek appropriate forward action? I think it is.
You can try and actually say councillor Brooks, that the idea of us moving there, this resolution will stop that. Well, we've been told they don't want us, so.
We haven't been told that.
That was what came across, sorry, I'm wrong.
It's in your words, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can you clarify, can the chair, can you ask Mr Ainsley to clarify? Because it came across wrong to me. Because when I asked the question, why did we not go forward with that lease or anything? Councillor Ainsley gave me the impression that it was because the trustees didn't want to. But that was not reported, so what is the true situation? But I will then sit down because I will stick to that bit that the working group can work with them, but we must not incur any more costs to the residents of Oakham at this stage.
Well, at this.
And they really need to get the Charity Commission involved and that because it would be sad if they shut the doors and it starts falling. If buildings deteriorate, I could go around and I look up all the buildings. And when they close, within 12 months, they fall into pieces. So we need to.
Clarification here, anyone? Could I just clarify the situation? This is what the trustees have told us. If we do not show willingness to move into it, they will by Christmas have to consider approaching the Charity Commission and basically saying that's it.
So why didn't we move in if they said they did? Sorry, if we wanted more than five years and they didn't want to do that, why didn't that come back to council? You know, and we could have been moving in. And as Sally Anne said, that £10,000 or whatever it is a year pays the bills and the insurance and it just doesn't make sense.
Councillor Ainsley. Yeah, thank you very much. It's not that they don't want to work with us, I did not say that.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood that, but that's.
What has been said is that even if we were to move in under the terms of the lease that was on offer all those months ago, then that would not help their financial situation. It would not allow them to continue operation of the Victoria Hall. And that was the issue. So the second point you raised was about expenditure. Well, we haven't agreed a budget of 20K and no additional expenditure, other than historical expenditure, has been made or will be made until it comes back to council. So it seems that actually what you're proposing is not necessary primarily because we will be coming back to council once the working group has come up with actually the rest, what of this we're intending to do? Remember, this is shifting ground. We initially said they wanted sole trustee, then that was considered to be an exceptional risk for the council, but this is yet to come back to council for decision. The decision will be made by council of went to hand noticing on this building, the decision of any additional expenditure, and that includes heritage architects, specialist solicitors. But I believe that it's important work that actually will, and we're not paying for this work. At the moment, this is sales, because that's basically what's happening is they are coming, we are asking people to quote and they're coming back with quotations. So I think there's no need to have an additional proposal that says no further expenditure. Because until six times, as we get agreement with the trustees, get agreement with council and have a full idea of what the likely costs are and whether we can afford it, then that's when a decision will be made by council. So I think what it's doing is stopping the work. But when I used to fly for a living, and I'm sorry about this, but we used to have a thing called red card, it was advantage, it was entered in court fire and we knew exactly what to do, pull this, pull that, switch that. And we had then a non-adventure card procedure, which actually said, the very first thing you do is we used to work to a new mic called grade, gather reviewers, decide evaluate. We are at the gather stage, we're gathering information together to understand the risk to council, the likely cost to council, the likely benefit to Victoria Hall etcetera, and the community etcetera, etcetera. So we're not committing to anything at the moment. And I think the, I personally will not be supporting your proposal on that ground, on those grounds.
I'm very confused and I don't want to drag this up, but I was on the understanding that at that meeting, forget the thing about us moving there. But we approved a budget of £20,000 for consultants to be appointed to do the work necessary to bring a report back to us to make a final decision at the November or December meeting. We're here tonight and we're getting asked questions. But I'm getting very confused because we're being asked questions. Can we pay for someone to write up a grant application? Financial advisory services, where's this come from? A specialist solicitor, they're not consultants. I didn't like the idea of consultants, but I thought that because we're not the experts in this thing, that I thought that they would come back and say, this is going to cost you this much money if you take this on and it's a good idea, or maybe you should stay away from it. I'd like to have thought that that's where we would have got to. So I don't even really understand what we're going to be asked to accept on here this evening from now. So I retract my proposal and then I just find that the whole situation is, it's not satisfactory. You know, Sally Anne has said, she's on the working group hall, and she said to, she didn't know about the issues with the lease. So I don't really understand why we've got to this situation. And now we're being told that Victoria Hall are saying if we don't move in there, we're going to mothball it. Well, and then we're being told if we move in, it won't help them out financially. So I'm getting confused.
Could I make a suggestion? We are, the suggestion has been made this evening that we defer this particular item anyway. Can I make the suggestion that we, perhaps all of us, if we are so minded, actually be with the Victoria Hall working group and discuss this at length as necessary?
I think that's a nice idea and I invite anybody who has such strong opinions to come onto the Victoria Hall working group. I don't know why you're sat on the cyclops, you could actually be actively engaging.
They're not here tonight, but they made it very clear they don't want to work with me.
Yeah.
Well, they're not here tonight, so.
Right, but we're moving forward, they're going to have to.
Can I just say one word here? We have to be very careful, as Tom Ainsley said, councillor Ainsley has said, this is a complex matter, it's the biggest thing probably Oakham Town Council have taken on in their history. It's a building and anybody who's willing to see it that has significant issues, we need to assess and get it right because this, on my little risk register, is very high risk.
Oh yeah, I agree.
And we need to, therefore, don't we? The one thing I agree, and the chairman agrees with me, I think, is we cannot do this in haste. We have to get this right and that will take time. Because the trustees need to also hear that we can enter into a solicitor's complex contract of lease that works, where they are distant from us but with us, working with Victoria Hall to work. We've taken, already got provisional solicitor advice, that can work, but it won't work overnight. We need to get the details right and that will take time. Sorry, I've got on.
And then, can we get it right and rush it through? Can we not contact the Charity Commission and ask them to bring someone to the meeting?
Let's councillor Brooks discuss that at the working group.
Okay.
Because I'm conscious that we're still going to be here this time tomorrow morning.
That's right, I'm good.
So I'm going to make the proposal that, rather, I believe it's your proposal, sorry councillor Ainsley, that we defer item number one.
Yeah, sorry, proposal one, yeah.
Two was just noting.
And two was noting in any case, so.
Two we are noting and, sorry for my attention, but the proposal is, if you would permit a small amendment to that, I will suggest in amendment that anybody that wants to have a more active part in the discussions regarding the Victoria Hall should certainly be invited and attend and come on to the next Victoria Hall working group meeting.
And let us know the name so we can be able to invite him.
Splendid. So that's the proposal from councillor Ainsley. I'm very happy to second that amended proposal. All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, on to then, yes, thank you, the budget item number 12. Item number 12 is coming to see us now. So essentially this is then, this is one of the noting?
Yeah, I mean, let's be clear what we're doing here and is the right time this year or not? We have, the finance working group has met, that this is a provisional budget. And the idea, and this is what most councillors should do, is we have it before you. If you have any comments, please either feed them through me or the chair or the working group so that we can, we next meet in December, we must be in a position where we can fix on the precepts. So there's plenty to talk about and I've got no problem with talking about it, any issues that are in this budget that have been set provisionally, which have been set by the working group. There's no problem with discussing this openly, but the idea is not to do it in a full council meeting. That's not the reason for a full council meeting. That's not the reason for a full council meeting. We need to get councillors' views on what they think of the budget, discuss it openly and then move forward.
Thank you very much, Clark.
So are we, are we not going to discuss it?
It's entirely up to the chair. Although I've got a few.
We're going to be at a time, I think.
They are, they are, sir.
Send my email.
I'm going to make the suggestion, everybody, that we note this as a received correspondence from the financial working group. I'm going to suggest that in our own time, you digest and make email, uh.
To the office.
Yeah, email suggestions to the office. At which point we bring it back to the next meeting and review the points raised to the clerk.
Thank you.
Does anyone support that?
I will support it.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment on the fact that we actually got it at this time of the year and you know, for many years this has been like a thing that's been rushed through at the last point of the meeting. So it's, it's a good improvement. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Lovely. So councillor Brooks has seconded that we, uh, defer with intermediate email correspondence. All those in favour? Against? Would you like to?
No, 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 neither of them.
So for your, for your clarity, Clark, if you are interested in, are you happy with?
Yeah, I mean, anybody who wants to contact me anytime within office hours, we can discuss. Uh, we'll talk it through with the finance working group, which will meet between now and the December meeting.
Marvelous.
I don't have many things for those.
Super. Okay, so, um, at this time we have an exempt item, item number sixteen, so is a matter for consideration in prior. So.
Just do the motion, please, from you. After the motion.
So the motion is, uh, that we resolve the press and public to be excluded from the meeting during consideration of the following items on the grounds that relate to individuals and the financial affairs of persons. This information is classed as exempt under paragraph one, two and three of schedule twelve A to section one hundred A of the London Government Act nineteen seventy two. Do I propose a for-exempt session?
Can I make a?
Can we just finish for this, please?
No, no, before we go to exempt, you're allowed to make a comment on the reason why we might not want it to go exempt.
You can make a comment.
Yes, there. Can I, chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I don't believe this item should go exempt, providing we don't mention the resident's name, which was obviously unfortunately put into the public domain and removed from the press this week. Um, I, I really don't understand why we need to go into exempt. I think it's going to be a very quick thing. Um.
Okay.
And, and it's, 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 you know, we're going to exempt, the words are on there, it says that if you're discussing an individual or a financial thing, and if we don't mention the resident's name, we're not actually discussing the individual.
But like you say, they relate to individuals slightly different.
We're discussing a matter which obviously has been brought to residence, which could, we need as a council to discuss within the councillors about which action, which action we take on this matter, that's the reason I've brought it here, which will be confidential and we don't, for obvious reasons, when you're in a situation like this, which anybody outside of this room does know what we can do to do at this stage. Because it's confidential and it's important we get it right.
We'll just go. It's fine. It's real time.
But it's so consequential that they can go out and read it in the running times, everything.
Anyway, we have to follow the protocol.
I know. That's why I've made my comment.
I think that in this instance, there are sufficient.
It's gone off.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Sorry.
Thank you. I think there's sufficient, um, documentation here that perhaps the individuals involved would prefer that we don't discuss this in the public domain because again, there is very little public interest. But I think that in this instance, we should respect the individual's privacy and there are elements that I think we shouldn't necessarily broadcast.
I'd say I accept you on.
Thank you councillor. So I made the proposal that we're going into exempt session. Thank you very much councillor Wadsworth, seconding.
Sorry if I talk.
All those in favour?